Good evening, everyone. We are going to reconvene and there is nothing to report from closed session. So we need a motion to adjourn the closed session.
No move.
I'll second.
And it looks like we need a council roll call vote.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. We are adjourned from closed session, moving into the regular 7:00 PM city council meeting. We have a quorum and let's begin. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
Present and appearing via Zoom.
Would you like to take this opportunity to speak to the remote presence?
Yes, thank you for that subtle hint. Yes, I am invoking the, I don't know what section it is because I don't have it in front of me, but I'm invoking the opportunity to not be present in the chambers due to a medical issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Mayor Meyer?
Here. And the, thank you. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, would you like to inform the audience whether we had anything to report out of closed session?
I thought I did. Oh, well, we had nothing to report out from closed session.
Thank you.
Thank you. The public comment time for tonight's items will be three minutes each. And because the vice mayor is participating remotely this evening, we will also accept public comments via Zoom for this portion of the agenda.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items that are listed under presentations, informational reports, or on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, new requests. First speaker I have is Dani.
Amanda, can you hold the clock until he starts speaking, please?
Oh, it started. I know. But thank you, Madam Mayor.
The silence is deafening, right? This is the silence from our neighbors and our veterans as we wait for our supervisor and CCC fire to answer the following questions. Why is a cramped downtown location better suited than the original Sand Creek location? What evidence has been or will be provided to satisfy the citizens of Brentwood? Evidence that a 24/7/365 unblocked access to and from this cramped firehouse will not end the farmer's market? Evidence that a 24/7/365 unblocked access will not affect our public events and 4th of July parades? Ev, a, sense that the cramped maneuverability of tight alleyways is more effective thereby providing a more immediate critical aid than a wide open Sand Creek location? These are not private matter questions. These are not questions regarding land being snatched by the government from our vets. These are city matters. Therefore, these questions fall well within your purview to ask CCC fire units, I mean executives. As the mayor and city manager are well aware, I've asked our city attorney to submit a TRO, Temporary Restraining Order, an injunctive relief to the court so that the county owner CCC fire, under oath, can answer the above questions. I haven't gotten a reply. Is there anything this body can do to, at least, answer the question? Before I close, there is a cabal of individuals who have attempted TO disgrace our veterans' plight. Calling vets a mob. Calling our veterans a mob. Claiming we are wasting your and our neighbors' time by coming out to complain. Their words, claiming the veterans do not respect the duty and sacrifice of our first responders. Nothing can be further from the truth. We are vets. Vets who fought for the right and use the privilege of exercising our right to bitch.
Nothing more needs to be said.
Next speaker is Melissa, followed by Daniel Duran, followed by Michael Clement.
Good evening. I apologize in advance if you heard this at the Arts Commission meeting, but I was asked by a former chairperson to come and present it to you as well. I'm here tonight to talk about the importance of the performing arts in our community and the need for dedicated space for local arts groups. This is about more than just entertainment. This is about investing in our youth, strengthening our local economy, and fostering a vibrant, connected community. First, let's talk about our youth. Research consistently shows that students who participate in the arts perform better academically, develop stronger social skills, and gain confidence through self-expression. The performing arts teach teamwork, communication, and resilience, skills that are invaluable in any field. Programs like school theater and music not only inspire creativity, but also provide a positive outlet for young people to grow and thrive. But the impact of the arts extends beyond education. Let's talk about our local economy. The nonprofit arts and culture sector in Sacramento County alone generates 241.7 million in direct economic activity each year. This industry supports over 4,300 jobs and contributes nearly 50 million in government revenue. Investing in the arts means investing in local businesses, job creation, and tourism. When people attend performances, they also spend money at restaurants, shops, and other local businesses helping to sustain our local economy. A great example of this impact is B Street Theater in Sacramento. Their school tour program reaches approximately 200,000 children annually, many of whom might not otherwise have access to live theater. This kind of arts engagement makes a lasting difference in young lives while also contributing to the region's economic and cultural vitality. So the question is, what kind of community do we want to build? A dedicated performing arts space would provide a home for local artists, create opportunities for youth, and boost our economy. I know Darren likes that. This is an investment that will pay dividends for years to come. I urge you to support the idea of a local performing arts space, open the discussion, and ensure that the arts continue to thrive in our community. Thank you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you for taking time to meet with the veterans regarding the proposed Fire Station 94. Your willingness to listen to our concerns is greatly appreciated, greatly. We also ask that you extend our gratitude to the planning commissioners for their careful consideration and thoughtful questions during last week's meeting. We were encouraged by their willingness to ask crucial questions, particularly regarding environmental impacts, design compatibility with the downtown specific plan, and potential infrastructure issues. Their dedication to transparency and community engagement was clear, and it reinforced our belief that together we can find solutions that honor both our veterans and our city. Thank you again for your continuing engagement. We look forward to ongoing discussions and collaborations. Thank you.
Good evening, council mayor. My name is Michael Clement. I'm a 60-year resident of Brentwood. I respectfully ask the council to consider offering the surplus property located at Stratton Court at East Sand Creek Road, parcel number 016-190-033, for the development of the new fire station. This site was originally developed as part of the 2005 Barrington project and was specifically designed as the replacement for Fire Station 54. As Brentwood continues to grow westward alongside Sand Creek Road, a fire station positioned there would significantly enhance the emergency response capabilities, particularly for the future of neighborhoods developing on the city's western side. The majority of Brentwood's new growth will not be concentrated downtown, making that location strategically important. Response times from Sand Creek Road to downtown Brentwood would remain within the approximately two minutes. And while response times to Discovery Bay would be slightly longer, Discovery Bay has its own dedicated station to manage local incidences. Moreover, placing the station at Sand Creek would reduce the frequency of calls that are currently being pulled by Discovery Bay's resources into Brentwood's improving service in both communities. Recently, Chief McAllister publicly stated that he inherited the decision to replace Fire Station 54 in downtown. However, it's reasonable to question if the decades-old decision is still the best choice for Brentwood's future needs. Offering the surplus Sand Creek property would demonstrate proactive planning for Brentwood's growth and long-term public safety needs. I'm asking the city council and everyone here that's sitting in this chamber to support the veteran community that has been here for over 100 years, fighting in every war. Korea, World War II, Bosnia, Somalia, Panama, Afghanistan, Iraq, Saudi Arabia, all these other places that they send these young men and women to go fight in. We come back just for our own little piece of salvation right there on First Street. That's something that we call home, and those are my brothers and sisters. I know there's a lot of hot topics around this fire station, but Brentwood City Council right now has the duty and responsibility to bring this to the people, to let them know if this is the best place for Brentwood. I say no. That's my vote. No to that station at that location.
Mike Miyakovich, followed by Chris, followed by Travis.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. I want to address something important that needs to be clear. How dare anyone blame the veterans for the delays surrounding Fire Station 94? This issue is absolutely not veterans versus firefighters. We fully support our firefighters and strongly believe in that the need for an additional fire station is needed to serve Brentwood. Veterans are not the cause of these delays. It's Contra Costa County and the fire district had properly proper procedures, performed their due diligence, and conducted the necessary environmental reviews. We would not even be having this conversation tonight. Veterans shouldn't be at fault for holding career bureaucrats accountable for their responsibilities. It is clear that a proper SEQA assessment should have been completed, and claiming an infill exemption was never appropriate. The delay we're facing is not the fault of our dedicated firefighters, nor is it the fault of the veterans. It is a direct result of mismanagement by county officials and fire district leadership. We should never accept shortcuts when it comes to public safety. Do it right the first time. We urge the city council to hold Chief McAllister and the county accountable for insisting on a decision that it no longer fits Brentwood's needs today and tomorrow. Please vote no on this issue. Thank you.
Good evening, city council. My name is Chris Suarez, and along with my wife, we own a local tattoo studio that has been a part of Brentwood for 16 years. I'm here to speak on lifting the band on tattooing in the downtown area. Since the last city council meeting, we've had 16 different groups of people who came in to get a service done at our shop for their birthday. The age range from a five-year-old up to a lady celebrating her 70th birthday. All those people had planned their whole day around visiting our shop, which continues to support the idea that our business is considered a form of entertainment to a large number of people. The services we offer would definitely add something different to the downtown area for all ages. Also, I'd like to touch on the misconception about businesses like ours, that we are a cash-only business and that we don't contribute taxes, but that is incorrect. We are a legally registered and properly, we are, I hate talking up here. We are legally, we are a legal, regulated, and properly-registered business who pays all taxes and fees required to operate. Lastly, I'd like to add that our petition created for residents has 600 signatures, and our petition specifically the downtown business owners has 30 signatures in support. We would love to see this come back on the agenda again soon. Thank you, guys.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor. We wish you a speedy recovery and wish well for you. Other council members, thank you all for a podium this evening. I'm going to wing it. No pre-written speeches here. But I'd like to clearly articulate my appreciation for, not the vote from the planning commission last week, but for the clear, articulative, while sometimes long-winded, discussion surrounding the specifics of the planning and the design review, the SEQA, and the things that are important to why any building, particularly one of such importance, is placed in its location in Brentwood. We want, no, we need and demand that there be a firehouse. Downtown needs it. The citizens of Brentwood, outlying of downtown, need it. But we have concerns, and we have issues that we have brought forth. And I don't need to re-enumerate all of them, the laws, the whole background on all of that. Everybody is becoming almost blasé about the fact that we have a legal standing, and nobody seems to be willing to take that up conversationally as an action item. But as we go forward, I had said previously that it will not end as a conversation or with the planning commission. We will revisit this with the planning commission when it comes again. And eventually, some version of this will pass through and come to you. And this is where we will look to you for the greater sense of not just the legal bedrock that is presented, but rather the larger moral and fiduciary responsibility that the members of this council have to their constituents across Brentwood. For us, as vets and members of your community, we have an extra level of concern over this. Between now and then, we hope that you continue to follow the issues as they come up. Revisit the conversations as we present them, and we are always open to the opportunity to sit down with any one of you. And I don't just mean the council members, but I mean the city administration as well. There is a lot that can be discussed and a lot that can be learned by having an open, full-throated conversation on where we stand and where we'd like to go. And we hope one day that this extends to the county.
Thank you, Travis, for the will wish.
I have one additional speaker card in person, and then we'll open public comments via Zoom. Dolores?
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor Meyer, city council, and staff. I would like to address the issue of the fire station response time, already commented by Mike Clement. But I wanted to add to that while the district has emphasized the response time specifically to downtown, it's important to remember that a fire station located at Sand Creek is actually closer to a much greater population density. The question we should be considering isn't simply about response times to downtown, but ensuring optimal response times to the largest number of Brentwood residents. Placing the station at Sand Creek positions our emergency responders closer to the areas where future growth and higher population densities are projected. This strategic location would benefit a significantly greater portion of our community, providing quicker and more efficient emergency services for more residents overall. I'd like to thank you for listening to all of the comments that have been going on for a while now, both in your chambers and also with the planning commission. And I want to remind you, no to the location and yes to the station. Thank you.
At this time, we'll take public comments via Zoom. If you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. And I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. We will, at this point, move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And we will start with Councilmember Orlemans.
Thank you, since, thank you, everyone, for being here this evening. And the public comments are always welcomed. We can't do our job if we don't know what you're asking us to do. So thank you for showing up. Thank you for all your opinions. Since the last council meeting, I did an agenda review for a Tri-Delta Transit meeting that'll be coming up tomorrow. A PAO board meeting, making, I had to make some changes to the filming of the State of the City address. I guess some of the scripting got changed. The Police Department's annual military equipment report. I attended for the third time, legally, the third one they've given, and I think it's reached about four people besides myself. So kind of questioning why it still needs to be done, but that's something we'll take up later on. The Chamber of Commerce mixer at Keller Williams, their office on Sand Creek Road. It wasn't a positive. I was going to report back on this, but I had the opportunity to attend three briefings regarding an incident that occurred almost 16 years ago with the Oakland Police Department. Four officers were killed in the line of duty. And good friends of mine, and I got to go hopefully teach young officers how to prevent some of those mistakes that were made or change some of the tactics that were performed on that incident by giving these briefings. One was at the Contra Costa County Academy, and then two here at the Brentwood Police Department. And that concludes what I had taken, or what I had done since last meeting.
Councilmember Maloney?
Hello, and thank you to everyone that is here in attendance today. Since our last meeting, I've attended our District 1 Town Hall meeting that was held at the Streets of Brentwood. I've also attended, I toured two youth centers with our county supervisor and other members of the county. We went to the Rice Center in Richmond and also the Girls Inc. Youth Center in Oakland. Those two different youth centers provided different services to the communities that they serve. So it's good to start kind of having an idea of what we want here on our side of the county. I've also attended a community iftar event at the Brentwood Muslim Community Center. That was an awesome event where everyone broke their fasting. If you guys don't know, currently, it's Ramadan where the Muslim community is fasting from sunrise to sunset, and it brings the community together and whatnot. It was a nice event. And I've attended two of our farmer's markets. And as a resident, I'd like to thank the Contra Costa Wine Growers Association because they held an awesome wine trolley event this weekend. weekend. And thank you.
Again, thank you all for coming out. I love it when it's a packed house, so thank you all. Since the last time we met, I attended a meeting with the HOA at Trilogy regarding some traffic issues, attended the town hall that we had at the Streets of Brentwood, and anyone can attend. It doesn't, it doesn't matter where it's located. Anyone who wants to attend one of our town halls with Tim, which is our city manager, can attend them, and please be on the lookout for those. Attended a meeting where Colin Coffey, our East Bay Regional Park Board member, presented, and a lot, you know, we are working on getting the, the Flag Barn transported somewhere out here in Brentwood, so they're still working on that, how to take care of that. We held a Know Your Rights, Immigration Rights event here at, in our city, you know, our community center, so attended that. Watched the, actually, I was here watching the Planning Commission live, had a Cal Cities Latino Caucus Public Relations Strategic Plan Meeting, and then had a Cal Cities Latino Caucus Board Meeting, and then also met with some residents over different topics these last couple of weeks.
Vice Mayor?
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry, I'm not in person, but I don't want to give you all the cooties. So, first, I watched, I went to the PAO crap feed, watched the Planning Commission meeting. I watched, I watched the Assembly Session. Gigi Crowder of NAMI received the Woman of the Year Award from Assembly Member Avila Farias. That was really cool to watch, watch her there, and for some reason, she kept popping up on screen, so that was cool to watch her. Watched the Town Hall of Congressman Mark DeSohnier. Watched the, participated on the webinar with the League of California Cities as they did their update on the legislation that they're going to support. Went to the Boys and Girls Club of Contra Costa County, 70th Anniversary in Ribbon Cutting. They are partnering up with Santa Clara, who has a lot more money so that they can get more services across the county. Then filmed for the State of the City Address. And I attended, which was really cool, with both Chair and Vice Chair, with Supervisor Ken Carson, Supervisor Chanelle Skiles Preston, the African-American Holistic Resource and Wellness meeting. There was a report out of the feasibility study, and it was awesome to see so many of our residents who were on the Steering Committee giving their feedback and input. So, there's a 13-member ad hoc committee, Steering Committee, and the feasibility study came out, so they're ready to get rolling on the hook. Those were my updates.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and, and thank you all for attending tonight and for providing your input. That does help us to make more informed decisions. Since we last met, I had a meeting with Senator Cowell at the Streets of Brentwood to discuss economic development and coming plans for the streets. A lot of exciting things coming down the pipeline there. Had a meeting with Trilogy HOA residents regarding continued concerns about the safety of Vineyard Parkway. I, I did the swearing-in of our new Art Commissioners and then stayed to watch the meeting and get an update on the potential projects at John Marsh House. Attended the Transplan State Route Forward Bypass and Ecrifa meetings. Had a meeting with the Brentwood Tobacco Work Group. Watched a presentation by Colin Coffey, the Ward Seven Board Member of East Bay Regional Parks. Attended Congressman DeSohnier's virtual Women's Roundtable for Women Leaders and Mayors in Congressional District 10. Attended a Know Your Rights event with Immigration Institute of the Bay Area. Did an interview with Cody Stark of Good Day Sacramento at the East Contra Costa Historical Museum. Did the swearing-in of the new Planning Commissioners and stayed to watch that meeting in person. Had a meeting with Finance Director Carrie Breen to get an update on the city's budget and finance projections. Attended a Community Day of Service Planning Meeting. Attended in person the Town Hall for Congressman DeSohnier. Served lunch at the Senior Center as part of the Meals on Wheels Diablo Region Annual Community Champions Week, and attended a Muslim ceremony to break the Ramadan fast with Captain Schorer. Moving into the consent calendar, we're going to poll Item Three. The proclamation will be presented after the vote on the consent calendar. And are we pulling anything, or do we have a motion on the consent calendar?
They're moved.
Just, just real quickly, you don't have to formally pull Item Three. You can vote on it now and then present afterwards. So, if you want to formally keep Item Three within the calendar, would the second agree to that? Yes? Okay, thank you.
Okay. And I believe we need a roll call?
Can we get a full motion to include the amended attachment for Item E8?
So, including adoption of the revised appointment list for Item E8.
Thank you so much. Roll call will be, Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
There is no one in the room. I'm by myself, and my vote is aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. And then moving into the proclamation, Councilmember Maloney?
If I can have Melissa Van Ruen, please come to the podium. Hello. This is too loud. All right. So, we are presenting National Diversity Month proclamation, and today, Vice Mayor Peterson and I would love to present this to you, and I'm going to read it. Whereas the city of Brentwood is a community that values diversity, equity, belonging, and inclusion, recognizing that our strength lies in the rich cultural backgrounds, perspectives, and experiences of our residents, and whereas National Diversity Awareness Month provides an opportunity to celebrate the contributions of individuals from all races, ethnicities, religions, genders, abilities, and backgrounds, fostering a more inclusive and understanding society, and whereas embracing diversity promotes innovation, economic growth, and sense of belonging, ensuring that all individuals respected, valued, feel respected, valued, and empowered to participate fully in their communities, and whereas the city of Brentwood is committed to advancing policies and initiatives that promote inclusivity, equitable opportunities, and social cohesion, reinforcing our dedication to a welcoming and supportive environment for all, and whereas during National Diversity Awareness Month, we encourage residents, businesses, and organizations to engage in activities that celebrate cultural heritage, challenge bias, and promote unity, reinforcing the values of mutual respect and acceptance. And it's an honor to present this to you. Thank you very much.
Can I say something?
Thank you for everything that you do. And do you have anything to say?
Councilmember Maloney, hold on.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Melissa, I'm just going to call you by your first name, I apologize. I want to say, your commitment to diversity, it doesn't, doesn't just open doors, but it builds bridges, and it brings people together. And I hope that you know from my heart to yours that you are a true champion of inclusion. You make the world a better place because of your voice, your courage, and your leadership. And I am so proud to have you as a resident in the city that I was blessed to become the Vice Mayor of. So, thank you so much. Couldn't think of anyone else to receive this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now that y'all have tried to make me cry. Thank you. I'm incredibly honored and grateful to accept the city of Brentwood's proclamation recognizing April as National Diversity Awareness Month. It means a great deal to me, not just as a resident, but as someone who believes deeply in the power of inclusion, understanding, and community. As someone who has seen firsthand how diversity shapes us for the better, I know how important it is that we continue to celebrate the many cultures, backgrounds, identities, and experiences that make up the fabric of our beautiful city of Brentwood. Diversity is not just something we acknowledge, it's something that we live every day. It's in our schools, our neighborhoods, our places of worship, our businesses, and right here in this very room, and on Zoom. For me, diversity has always meant more than difference, it's about connection. It's about listening to one another's stories, recognizing each other's struggles and triumphs, and building a city where everyone feels they belong. In Brentwood, I see these values in action in community and events, in inclusive policies, and in the genuine effort to create space for all voices. I want to thank the city for not only recognizing National Diversity Month, but for continuing to foster a culture where equity and empathy guide our future. This proclamation is not just a symbol, it's a promise, a promise that Brentwood will continue to be a place where everyone, regardless of where they come from, who they are, who they love, they're all welcomed and valued. Once again, I'm honored to accept this proclamation on behalf of everyone who believes in the beauty and strength of a diverse community. I'm proud to stand with you all in celebrating the spirit of unity that diversity brings, and I promise that I will never stop being a voice for progress and diversity for all people. Thank you. Picture? Can I get you guys to come take a picture?
I'm going to lean in so you can get my big face in there, too. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Photoshop me in.
And it's important to pass the idea of diversity on to our next, our next generation as well.
I'd like to move up Item F1. Sorry, which one am I, I'm sorry, not F1. G1 and G2, ahead of F1. Item G1 is a consideration of direction as to mitigation and operational measures for the Creekside Park pickleball courts. Erin Wandon, Parks Manager, will present this item. Thank you, Erin.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members, and thank you. Staff is seeking direction tonight from City Council on the potential mitigation measures for the Creekside Park pickleball courts. Noise concerns have been a recurring issue for nearby residents of these courts since they opened in August of 2024. At that time, City Council directed staff to provide an operational update to the Park and Recreation Commission and to provide input, sorry, this is dropping on me, and solicit the commissioners as to possible mitigation measures. Measures taken at that time included, as indicated in the staff report, and much more in-depth information, I'll go through the list. The first was adjusting the hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., which originally were till 10:00 p.m. Painting applicable curbs red around the perimeter of the park. Court modifications that included repairs of the doors to open properly, as well as adding amenities for paddles and reservation for players, which resulted in additional signage and windscreen removal for viewing of the play. Electrical panel and lighting security issues due to vandalism were repaired by staff as well. And then staff began research on sound dampening barriers. At the January 14, 2025 City Council meeting, Mayor Meyer and Councilmember Mendoza requested sound study with an estimated cost up to $12,000, noticing that the sound studies measure the decibel level and not necessarily the nuisance popping noise of the balls, but they are decibel ratings. Locking the court doors at any, at a specified time, which would incorporate staff time to open and close, which would be similar to what Recreation Staff does currently at the skate park. That's roughly to the tune of $15,000 annually for staff time. Conduct a reservation system, which is anywhere from $99 to $499 a month, depending on the system that ends up being utilized, if that was the case. There's obviously different programs out there, so it'd be depending on which program was utilized. Then just basically adjusting the court hours, which would be a minimal cost, depending on staff time, if they do end up having to go out and lock up or unlock or lock up, then we'd be looking at the same $15,000 annually for staff time. Another option is to look into sound walls and/or landscape screening. Obviously, sound walls can be expensive. The landscape screening, not as expensive, to the tune of $2,000 to $5,000 for that area, depending on the size of shrubs and the amount of shrubs ended up utilized. Option seven would be restricting the paddle and ball models. There's current technology out there, we're constantly hearing about vendors trying to upgrade the paddles and the balls to reduce the noise. Obviously, that would be a challenge for regulating. And lastly, the only real method that would completely eliminate the pickleball paddle noise would be court removal and/or refurbishing into tennis or some other recreational-type court play. Staff seeks direction from the City Council on which of these mitigated measures, if any, and staff is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin. Do we have any clarifying questions? Okay, we can move into public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed from those participating via Zoom. We did receive one written comment in advance, which is displayed on the screen. My first comment, or person in, speaker in person is Okizi.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. And, okay, and also, good evening, staff. My name is Okizi Eros Manta. I have been living in Brentwood for roughly 16 years, and I'm actually kind of shy to say that this is my first time coming to this meeting, and I'm really glad for the opportunity. A few minutes back, we heard from the gentleman who spoke about Creekside Park and some of the difficulties or complaints by the neighbors. One of the things, you know, I want to speak from the heart. I, I enjoy living in Brentwood, and over the years, I've kind of, if you ask me, I have lived an isolated life. I never really cared about my neighbors, but through pickleball, I have found a community of loving neighbors. I have been able to mingle with people that I would not have in a lifetime mingled with, but all because of the love and brotherhood that I have experienced on the pickleball court. I understand the need for consideration, especially with the noises, but one of the things I've learned through pickleball is, is about consideration. I have neighbors that, they work on noisy cars. Initially, that bothered me, but it also forced me to think deeply, what about the noise that's actually bothering me? Is there something behind it? Is it because maybe I'm not happy with their hobbies? And as I dig deeper, I start to understand it actually bothers on tolerance for each other, and I think we live in a country where a lot of that is missing. Sometimes when I wake up in the morning, the chirping of the birds can bother Sometimes when I wake up in the morning, the chirping of the birds can bother me, but I know we have cats, we have owls, that sometimes they bother me, but I have to think, you know, they have a right to exist. They have a right to live their life and do whatever they need to do. So look beyond that, and over time, I've noticed, you know, I'm no longer bothered by that. So I do empathize with the neighbors that feel bothered by the noise of pickleball, but this to me is about public good, a public good that we need to be more accommodating and tolerant of one another in that sense. And I do have, you know, if you look behind me, we have a strong community of pickleball players. These are people that in a million years, I wouldn't have gotten to know about through this sports. In fact, what I'm encouraging is how can we expand it further in Brentwood while taking consideration our neighbors as well? Thank you.
The next speaker is Erin, followed by Dave, followed by Gary.
Good evening, council members, community leaders, and neighbors. My name is Erin Estrada, and I lived in Brentwood for over 20 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight regarding keeping our pickleball courts open and ensuring the lights stay on. Pickleball has become one of the fastest-growing sports in America, particularly in suburban areas like ours. A study by Sports and Fitness shows participation in pickleball has surged by nearly 159% over the last three years. It has attracted 8.9 million U.S. players of all ages and fitness levels. Why? Because it's a sport for everyone. You can see here, young professionals, retirees, families, and individuals looking to stay active and fit. But here's the challenge. Many of our residents work long hours and commute. According to the U.S. Census, the average suburban commute is nearly 30 to 60 minutes, and they did not consider Vasco Road in this one, okay? This means most people don't get home until well after 6:00 or 7:00. Without evening access to recreational facilities, these hard-working individuals are left with limited options for exercise. Cities like Brentwood that prioritize recreational amenities like pickleball courts attract new residents and businesses. A 2023 survey by the National Recreation and Park Association found 74% home buyers consider access to parks and recreational spaces a key factor in choosing where to live. According to Zillow, pickleball courts have been a great selling feature nationwide and are mentioned in listings 64% this year over last. Communities that support active lifestyles see higher property values, stronger social connections, and improved public health. But let's talk about Creekside. Creekside is the only place you can play pickleball in Brentwood without being invited or having to pay a fee. It's a place where people of all faiths, backgrounds, political parties, ages, and ethnicity can gather together to have fun and create a sense of community. Keeping our pickleball courts open and well lit in the evening is a small but powerful investment. It promotes an active, healthy lifestyle and encourages social interaction. It makes our town more attractive place to live. The number of public pickleball courts in the U.S. has risen from 420 in 2017 to just under 3,000. California has 3,600 pickleball courts. Brentwood has one. I urge the council to understand that the solution to the issue isn't to turn the lights off, but to build more courts. The more courts, the smaller the groups that gather. Let's ensure that everyone, regardless of their new, their home.
The speaker's time has expired. Thank you.
Before we move on, Amanda, I'm sorry, I need to remind everyone that we need everyone here to feel safe in being able to say what they need to say, and if we are applauding, then people might not feel brave enough to step up and speak in the opposition, so please refrain from applauding. We appreciate your feedback, absolutely, we're all listening, but please take that into consideration. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Dave, followed by Gary, followed by Erin.
Good evening, council, mayor. My name is Dave Sykes. I've been a resident in Brentwood since 1997 after I got out of the military. Thank you for the veterans here, appreciate it. I live on Arlington Way. I've been down there, I lived down there since 1997, original owner, still there. I have seen the changes in Creekside Park and in the area, and I appreciate everyone here and their enthusiasm for pickleball. I think it's great. My father-in-law and other people I know play it. I'm not a player, there's other reasons why I don't play, it's more health, but anyway, I don't think you realize the impact that it has had on our community, on our street. There's only one ingress egress, Cheshire or Arlington Way. If you start, you know, and I live down there, I'm down that park daily. I see Dave down there, I see a lot of these people I recognize. They may recognize me, I don't know. Nonetheless, the impact is substantial. Noise, I can hear pickleballers in the morning, all the way down, I've heard them all the way down at the noise and the pick and the ball, all the way down at Fairview and Creekside, or Fairview and Arlington Way, just to give you an idea how far that noise travels. And a couple of comments, I think Erin, the park manager, I think his last suggestion's the best, is that you move it. Move it to another location, move it to a different park. I don't know why any other study wasn't done, now they're going to be doing studies for sound and the impact, why wasn't that done prior to this? It's a small area that is not a large park. You had Orchard Park, you had Veterans Park, you had Sunset Park, and all these other parks that have more parking, more ability to ingress egress the area. Because if you go down there in the mornings and wait till cherry picking season comes, and you're going to see cars parked from the middle of Arlington Way, about the 1,100 block, all the way around to Crescent. And I kid you not, because that park is packed. You put in frisbees, and I don't care if people use it, I really, I don't. I'm just telling you that the impact that this has had, and I applaud them, but you know, people like this gentleman here, he loves it, I agree, I think it's a great community, they're all having fun, but he may be there for an hour or two, and then more people, but they don't realize how many people use that area. You just don't. I mean, it is busy from 7:00 in the morning until, you know, I go and walks in the evening until 9:00 o'clock at night. So I'm just trying to tell you that you should really consider opening a different location and either minimizing this court or close it altogether. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
No applause?
Just call for the applause, please.
Gary?
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, and council, and staff. Yeah, I play pickleball, and lots of people do, all different ages, as was stated before. But what I want to talk about really is the control of the environment. How many of us really have control of everything around us? You know, I live in a neighborhood here in Brentwood, and I have neighbors that, a block away, that a couple times a month, they have an outdoor band till, I don't know, 11:00 o'clock at night or something, in large crowd. It's some noise. I don't go to the concerts, but that's their privilege. But I don't come here and complain about, oh, there's some band noise going on. How many, how many people have lived in Brentwood a long time, had some land around them they thought was farmland, and all of a sudden it becomes developed? Oh my gosh, the land got developed. I have, I had an empty field behind me, and now I have houses, maybe even kids, maybe even swimming pools. You know, we don't have control of the environment around us, and it's unrealistic to think that we do. Yes, I sit out in my backyard, I'm about a block from Lone Tree Way. I hear auto traffic, cars screeching up and down the road, but I don't come here and say, you know, you gotta stop traffic on Lone Tree. You know, I'm a member of a partnership, we own a condo in San Francisco, and it's near Presidio, nice neighborhood, but, you know, they're going to tear down a hospital, a multi-story hospital, a multi-story parking lot, and office building, for five years, it's going to be a very destructive situation. But that doesn't mean people can go to the San Francisco government and say, oh, well, you know, don't let them tear down that building because it's too damn noisy, you know, I'm not going to like it. You know, they have hours for doing that, and it's, you know, restricted. I guess another thing that I have thoughts about is, it was going to allude to, pickleball capacity is limited in this town. I mean, Discovery Bay has six newer ones plus two old ones, and they're trying to build six more, and they're less than a fourth the size of Brentwood, shows how under-capitalized we are in pickleball courts. But because we have so few, we need those extra hours. Let's face it, in the summer, it's too darn hot to play pickleball in the afternoon. So you either gotta be out there in the morning, or you have to be out there in the evening. And 9:00 is not that late in the evening. The reduction from 10 was probably a good idea. And I guess the last thing, I'm running out of time here, is, yeah, I'd like to see decibel studies of the homes nearby inside with the windows closed in their backyards. How loud is?
Speaker timer has expired. The last two speaker cards I have in person are Erin and Brianna.
I want to thank the mayor and the council members and the staff here for the opportunity to speak. I want to echo the words of Okizi, who spoke about the pickleball community and the sense of brotherhood, and there are many of my friends who are here today, and many of my friends who are not here today, and the pickleball courts are a really wonderful place where people come together and have the sort of community and camaraderie that should be fostered by the Parks and Rec Department and by the city. I also want to especially highlight the intergenerational nature of pickleball. I have three children who are here tonight, who are pickleball players. One of them earned a silver medal at the California State High School Championships a week and a half ago, and one of them won a gold medal a week and a half ago at the state high school championships. The three of them will be competing in a Western U.S. national pickleball competition in May, and it has been such a blessing for my family to be able to go to the courts at Creekside and have my children mentored and befriended by people of all ages and all backgrounds, and it has been a tremendous benefit, blessing to our family. I'm a teacher, I teach in San Francisco, I cart my kids with me, they go to the school where I teach. We get back every day between 5:30 and 6:00, unless the bar is delayed, and then it's after that. And it is, it is important to us personally to have a place where we can play pickleball after 6:00 p.m. I sympathize with those who have to deal with the nuisance of the noise, and I understand if decisions, if accommodations need to be made. When I heard that the hours were going from 10:00 to 9:00, I thought, oh, yeah, it's probably a good idea. If I was in a house right next to those courts, I'd probably want it to be done by 9:00 too. I can understand that perspective, I appreciate the gentleman who voiced those concerns, I think they should be heard, but I hope that we can find a way to keep the courts open in the evenings, to have some opportunity to play, and let's build some more courts. And then when those new courts are built, maybe reduce the hours at Creekside or something like that. Thank you all for the work you do, I really appreciate it.
Congratulations to your children, sir.
Yeah, can we clap for them? Okay. So, hi, city council members and fellow pickleball community, and everyone else in the room, and congratulations to your kids, because I've watched them play, and they're absolutely amazing. But my name is Brianna Roscoe, and I'm speaking on behalf of the pickleball courts. This sport has been a positive impact in the Brentwood community, and having the pickleball courts has encouraged people to make friends, learn something new, and create a positive environment for all, for people of all ages to come together and to have fun, essentially. This is something active, healthy, and healthy for people to participate in throughout the week, and brings people from surrounding cities to come and see what the city of Brentwood has to offer. We respect the rules of the courts in the neighborhood and try not to create a disturbance, and leave when we're supposed to. We have people in the pickleball community who take it upon themselves to bring equipment to clean the courts and to keep it looking nice for the people to enjoy. This is a sport that I fell in love with and have brought together a pickleball club who equally loves it as well, and none of us really played before up until we found the courts, and now this is something that we call home on Friday nights. There's even some times where I say, oh, we're going to cancel it for tonight, and everyone's like, why? We're looking forward to pickleball every week. I've even have the privilege to teach kids about the game of pickleball, and their parents go as far as looking for lessons in the city for them. There's even a woman who dedicates her time to teaching tennis to the courts next door, like right a couple steps over, to groups of children that come during the light, when the lights are on. Parents work and only have time to bring their children to fun activities during the time that the lights need to be on. It would be sad to see the lights go off because it would take away an experience that people of all ages and children look forward to every day. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person, I do have one hand raised. Danny, go ahead.
Yeah, good evening. I wasn't going to say anything because I don't play pickleball. My wife and I, or my wife wants to play, and I'm just too lazy to go about doing it. But in listening, I start thinking, 8:00 every morning, my neighbor's dogs come out, and they bark, and they bark, and they bark. I'm listening to the comments about noise, and I'm thinking, well, wait a minute, this sport apparently is noisy. So, and if I understand it correctly, it is not open for general use, and I may be wrong, again, I don't play pickleball, but it sounds like you have to make reservations and things along those lines. Again, I may be wrong, and the pickleball enthusiasts can certainly clarify that. The question of hours, well, the complaint seems to be the lights, although all I heard was noise and noise abatement, which leads me to wonder, is it really the lights or just a small group of people who happen to live near this pickleball court who are up in arms? It seems like it's the former, that it affects a minority group of people who are inconvenienced. But I go back to, as I said, I'm not a pickleball enthusiast, but I do have a neighbor whose dogs go out every morning at 8:00. And it's just something, as one of the participants said, it's just something that we should get accustomed to, and is this for the greater community or for a few people? Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. With no other speakers, we will close public comments and move into council discussion. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
My light is on, Mayor. I'm just kidding. So thank you all for being there, and I, this is an issue that I think has come before us before, and it's a subject of conversation, but it's actually nice to have it on agenda to have a full, lengthy conversation about the sound. And I'll, to Mr. Dorman, I think before me, I haven't heard much about lights. The majority of all of the comments that I've heard have been. The majority of all of the comments that I've heard have been asked to sound, so that's what I'm gonna address tonight. One, let me go back as the, one of the biggest proponents for diversity in the room, I absolutely love and adore that I got to see so much diversity that this sport has brought. And I appreciate all the speakers and yes, to the gentleman who came, congratulations to your children for their awards. With that, as many of you that are there who are here to talk about the joy of pickleball, which I still haven't tried, but I cannot wait to do it because it sounds fun. I've had about that number of people complain in emails or in person or by phone call about the noise and it's primarily the residents near the pickleball court. And so I'm reminded of a conversation we've had, Mr., well, several of you all will know, about the sound law, right? About the sound from Highway 4. And I did have the opportunity to look at the staff report and saw all the recommendations. So when I looked at them, there were only a handful of them that I thought were, to me, made sense. The sound dampening barriers would, I think our chief of police said that that will be a security issue. I'm concerned about it being a security issue. I'm concerned about the amount of money that it would bring to bring the sound dampening barriers. I'll skip over and come back to sound study, but I think number seven was so silly because who's gonna actually be able to enforce this? Like, and then the reservation thing is like, who's gonna monitor this or how can we keep up with it? If someone wants to just show up and do something, they're gonna do it. It's gonna take us a while to be able to get staff out of there. So I thought, two of my thoughts were, you know, locking the courts down should be an absolute yes. Anyone who violates, I think signage is silly. It's nice to support, but I think we do need the enforcement of locking the court doors at a certain hour. I think we do need to consider adjusting the court hours. And I do like the idea of the landscape screening, but I do really want to return to why do we have a pickleball court in a residential neighborhood? And, you know, I've brought this up several times that we do need to have our CD building look up. I brought this up last time. It'd be nice to have indoor pickleball courts where we can actually have pickleball around and not just in the winter or the spring, but have it, I mean, winter, spring and fall, but have it in the summer because it is a sport that we do know a lot of our residents like. But to the sound study, we had a sound study on the, and Councilmember Orlemans and I argued this, we had a sound study that we paid a nice chunk of money for, for the sound wall. And it came back that it wasn't the biggest issue, but we still put money towards it because residents on that street were bothered by it. And when we talk about sound and annoyance, one of the gentlemen said, oh, can we control our environment? We absolutely can control our environment. That's our job as city council. The council before, way before me created BMC Section 8.00.030, PRIN B2, that said, we can't have basketball hoops on, that prohibit them on a public way or a sidewalk. I love basketball. I can argue that it brings a lot of people together, but for other reasons and concerns, we don't allow them on our public sidewalks or our city streets. It has to be in a location, on your actual property. That's one thing. The other thing is BMC, as a councilperson, I'm looked at, what's our governing documents when I have to consider what's best for residents? And so I look at the Brentwood Municipal Code, BMC Section 9.32.030, which is designated noise zones. Zone one is residential and it talks about exterior noise. From 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, the exterior should be 60. Now, we can do a sound study and spend money and we may come back, but there are certain times when it's really loud or when it's not loud. From 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, it should be 45. But one of the things that really stood out to me was BMC Section 9.32.060, General Noise Regulations. And this is what I think I'm supposed to consider. When we talk about noise and sound violations, the sound level one, number one, is the sound level of the intrusive noise. What is it? What is the proximity of the noise to residential sleeping facility is number three. Number five, what are the number of persons affected by the intrusive noise is what we have to consider. Number six, the time of day or night the noise is occurring. Number seven, the duration of the noise and the tonal context. And number eight, whether the noise is continuous, recurrent or intermediate. Now, one of the things that I have consistently heard, it is not just the sound of the pickleball, it is the cheering and the celebration that goes on that is disturbing. And I think, yes, to the gentleman's point, we can't regulate during those times where noise is permissible. But one of my biggest concerns is when I have residents who have children that they're trying to put to bed or it's before it's time to wake up or go to work and we hear that there are celebrations at 6:00 AM before time. One of the other things is, as a mother of a child who is autistic, has cerebral palsy, like neurodivergence, and you have noises that are disturbing after the time where people come to the court to speak on, those are disturbing to me as a councilperson. So I think we do need to have a nice meet in the middle where we can still encourage. We also do know that recreational sports is big on health, wellness, happiness, joy, especially for many people who are coming out after COVID. And we're trying to get outside and extracurriculars, but just allowing the pickleballs to exist the way they are, where they are, is not helpful to our residents. And if we spent a crack ton of money for the sound wall to go up, now is time for us to spend it to help support the people in the area who are having an issue with the sound is disturbing their peace. So, and that, I'll say that the title section of Title IX and BMC is public peace and welfare. This is what we're talking about, public peace and also the public's welfare. So I think as a council, we do need to come up with a happy meet in the middle. Mine is locking the court doors, adjusting the hours to a shorter time. And I understand people have commutes, but there's also weekend hours to play. And then we have this Sand Creek Sports Complex coming up and hopefully eventually we figure out some indoor component, which I keep arguing. I'm finding out that, you know, we need more than an indoor component for our youth. We need an indoor component for other recreational activities that we still do not build in a city where we have heat that can be, where people pass out at graduations. Something we definitely need to consider.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes, I thank you all for coming out. I think it's important that you come out. I am big on parks. If you've never, you've never been to a meeting, I fight for parks 24/7. I think our staff is probably sick of how much I fight for parks. I think that pickleball courts are needed. This was actually put in, approved before I was on council and I actually wonder why it was put where it was because the guidelines for the pickleball association say that a pickleball court should be about 200 to 300 and they encourage 300 feet from a house. Anything closer than that is really, really loud and can get to over 80 decibels. So I don't think we need a sound study because there's enough court cases now that tell us where that sound is. It's about 80 decibels with the balls and the cheering is what they've come to the conclusion. So we know it's loud. I don't think we need a sound study. I've been out there. So I get, you know, Vice Mayor Pearson says that we get the emails and we do. And if we get them at night, I'll drive out there to listen and to watch and you guys are having a great time. I think it's fantastic that you're having a great time. But I also do see the negative impact on the neighborhood and what is happening with their parking, with the noise, with, you know, after nine o'clock, people hang out outside for a while is what I've also watched. Our police department is getting called a lot, so a lot of our resources for public safety are going down to the pickleball courts. So I do want pickleball courts. We, as a council, have talked about, we need to find another space for more courts because we know it's important. But I think Vice Mayor Pearson went through everything in detail. I think we should mirror the hours that Discovery Bay has, which are, I think, 7:00 to 7:00 or something along those lines during the weekend. I think they start at 7:30, half an hour later. But I think a 7:00 to 7:00 would be a good start. I don't think we should shut them down completely. I don't think that's the answer because so many of you are playing, they're necessary. But I think a start of 7:00 to 7:00 and then see how it goes. Like, has it improved for the neighborhood? Is it getting better, the quality of life for them? Because at the end of the day, this is their home. And while I understand a car here and there might be loud, I mean, I have dogs in my neighborhood, but they don't bark 24/7. I have loud motorcycles in my neighborhood, but they're not on 24/7. I don't know what it would be like to live around something that was 24/7 like this. I just, I don't know. But I don't think we should do it away with it. I think that we should look at the hours. I have a question for staff, for Erin. If we, why is there an incremental spend? I don't know where Erin went, sorry. Oh, there you are, sorry. I'm not sure, why is there an incremental spend on headcount if they're already out there doing their job? Like you said, there was a cost to have someone lock it up? Like if they're-
The, like the skate park?
Yeah, like why is there, why can't you just go from the skate park to, or from here to the-
And that staff, still staff time.
But is it incremental?
It's a minimum two hour, each assignment, you got a minimum two hour payment. So they're different hours too. So that the staff that closes the skate park, I'm not sure that, but it's not the same timeframe. So then there would be another staff member that would have to do the closing. We could certainly have full-time staff do the opening Monday through Friday, but then your Saturday and Sunday, we're gonna need additional support. And then closing at 7:00, we don't have full-time staff on duty at that time.
Yeah, because I know, because I know someone who does it for East Bay Regional Parks, they'll send someone out that's already on the clock to just go do it. It's just like, hey, can you go do this when you're on? Like they have different people that do it on different days, Round Valley, for example. So maybe finding that so it's not such an incremental spend.
No, absolutely understand that. And yeah, that would be, that was a maximum of $15,000 annually if literally that's a new assignment. So staff would certainly work with current staff to get it down as best we could.
Yeah, so whenever we're ready to make a motion, I think my motion would be the hours from, what, yeah, from 7:00 to 7:00 and then to have a lock put in and then assess how that goes over the next few months.
Thank you. Any comments? Yes, go ahead.
Well, I could just say ditto to most of it, but I'm not gonna. I'm gonna spend just a couple of minutes. I went through each one of these options that were prevented or presented as options and tried to find others of my own. The sound dampening barriers aren't gonna do what we want them to do. I don't believe that that's the way to go. I don't, I don't think, I'm living right on the other side of a sound wall from Balfour Road. I live with the sound all day long and I'm deaf. I wear hearing aids, but it still bothers me it's that loud. So I don't think the mitigation of a sound dampening barrier is gonna do us any good. The sound study, it's loud. There's no other way around it. Pickleball courts are loud. I've sat out at Creekside Park. I've gone up to the ones up in the, up on Vineyard Parkway and they're just, the sport is a loud sport. So there we go, the study's done. I'm kind of on track with locking the courts up a little bit earlier, but completely sympathize with everything you're saying. Then we should be looking at trying to build more courts and I agree 100%. Nobody's saying, we're done, pickleball's over, let's lock the doors. I don't think that's our solution. Our solution is to give these residents a little bit of relief where they live during certain hours, realizing they have to deal with this sound for the 12 hours we're saying that it's gonna be opened anyway. Those pickleball courts weren't there when they bought the house. Balfour Road was there when I bought my house. I knew what I was getting. We introduced these pickleball courts later on. So I think we owe it to the residents to try to mitigate some of that or at least the best we can by adjusting the court hours. I'm sure we can come up with an idea of how to pace, of how staff can work that out with the pricing of what it's gonna cost us. So I'm kind of on board with the timing.
Councilmember Maloney?
Thank you all for coming to speak. I really appreciate the sense and spirit of community that pickleball brings to all of you. I do like the idea of locking the gates by utilizing maybe somebody that's already on the clock, maybe someone, I don't know if anybody from Public Works works during the weekend at all, or maybe a community service officer that could lock up the courts. I'm not quite sure if you want to use someone on the clock, but that's an idea that just pops in my head. The other thing is, I'm okay with lessening the hours, but it also makes me sad for the commuters. I am a commuter as well. But I would be very much open to lessening the grief that the residents are going through. And I would like to look at other parks for pickleball because I don't believe the sports complex is gonna be done for a while. So I would think that would be good if we looked at other parks.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with just about everything that's being said here. I want to mention, I don't think a sound study is necessary. Erin mentioned that vendors are trying to upgrade their tech to soften the noise and get specific equipment that doesn't carry noise as well. So this is very definitely a problem that we're seeing and we asked staff to look at other jurisdictions to see what their concerns were and they're very similar. This is a, it's a huge sport. It's a wonderful sport. It's a great sense of community, but it is very disruptive to the houses that are too close to it. In asking what staff learned from other jurisdictions, I heard some stories about what other cities that they talked with were hearing about the complaints. I guess that's a, it's a pretty well-known thing as much as this group loves pickleball and everything about it, this group says, great, but you don't live here. So there's some complications there. A couple of years ago, we had complaints from one of our neighborhood parks, Dolphin Park, where there's a water feature that got featured on YouTube on some, somebody's podcast about parks in the area, free parks. And so people were coming from all over the place and being very, very noisy. And Dolphin Park residents that surrounded this park were really upset about it and what can we do? What can we do? Finally, the simplest solution was we turned off the, and we're still doing it, I believe, turned off the water feature for a couple of hours in the middle of the day. So people didn't feel like it was worth that long trip in to spend the entire day there. They came and they left again. And it was a simple solution like that. I think our simple solution is going to have to be exactly what's been said, which is still allow the pickleball court there. It's still allow the community to come together, but put some restrictions on it that somewhat improve the quality of life for the residents right there. And I don't think at this point it's feasible to move it. I absolutely agree with my colleagues that we have to figure out more places to put them, but I also ask you to understand that it's not as simple as saying, go. There's costs involved and there's, we have to figure out the spacing for it. There's a lot of other criteria. So it's not, it's not going to happen immediately, but ask for you to be patient with us because we are certainly all hearing you that this is a priority for you. I think at this point, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion, Madam Mayor.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
I move to provide the following direction to staff, that we adjust the court hours from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, that we include locking of the court doors upon the closing of the court and opening them back up at the opening. And we send staff time and attention to providing to council at a future agenda, I mean, at a future meeting, some type of recommendations for other areas that we can provide pickleball that is not disturbing or in a residential neighborhood.
And I'll second that.
Can I get a roll call vote, please? And before we do, actually, any clarifications? Darren, Katie? We're good. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
I'm in a room by myself and I vote aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes, the item passes. Just for clarification, the reason the Vice Mayor is doing that is as part of when you are remote, you have to acknowledge that you're alone in the room. So if you're doing that over and over again, that's why. Okay, we are going to-
Madam Mayor, just as relates to timing, this would not happen immediately. If you give us some time to work with our Parks and Rec staff to determine how best we'd go about it. Also, for the residents who are, both the residents and the participants, we will do our best to open right at 7:00 or right, you know, or close right at 7:00. But it might be, you know, a little bit before, a little bit afterwards, especially at the beginning, as we try to allocate staff time and resources to do that. Just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that-
The expectations.
Yeah, the expectations.
Can you just keep council updated on the timing? Just because we're, we get a lot of questions from the residents, so that would be fantastic. Just let us know where you are in the process.
Yeah, we'll make sure and then also we'll make a notice on social media and provide it out to some of our partners so that they know when we'll begin the 7:00 to 7:00 hours of operations.
Thank you. We also ask that, as you are displaying tonight, that you respect each other and what you're all working through with this process and understand that nobody's trying to, you know, stop anyone's fun or stop community, it's just everyone needs to have their quality of life too. So thank you for respecting each other this evening as well. We are going to move into item G2, which is the Vineyard Parkway traffic update and I'll- And Alan Bacalar, city engineer, will present the next item.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, but Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council.
Vice Mayor Pearson? Are you feeling okay? Do you need a quick break?
I was just going to ask you if we can take a quick five-minute break if possible.
Yes, of course. Sure. We're going to go ahead and reconvene. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Uh, again, moving into item G2, the Vineyards Parkway traffic update. Alan Bacalar, city engineer, will present. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening. Uh, here's your Vineyards Parkway update. As a bit of background, back, uh, last year in September 24th, city council received a report and directed staff to monitor and reassess Vineyards Parkway for an all-way stop control along Vineyards Parkway at Village, at Trilogy Parkway, Solera Street and, and the Lucia Lane and Sacred Mountain Lane.
I'm sorry, Alan. Could you give me just one second?
Someone has their audio on.
Go ahead, Alan. Nope. Go ahead, Alan. Nope. Apologies for those part, or listening in on Zoom. We're having microphone feedback. We're just trying to figure that out.
All right, we're ready to continue. So a quick overview of Vineyards Parkway. It is about 1.6 miles long. It has eight intersections. And the two intersections I noted earlier are highlighted in green there. Uh, we also serving this community, we have the Club Los Maganos. Uh, we have the Los McDonald's Community College with the green arrow, uh, the green star on it and the Future Amphitheater and Event Center site in red, with the red arrow, with the red star on it. Uh, the roadway was designed in 2005 and built around 2007. A quick summary of prior analysis for the all-way stop. Uh, we had two analyses performed, one in 2023 and another in 2024. The warrants were not met. Uh, we are currently, uh, getting ready to have a consultant perform a new all-way stop warrant analysis, which is planned to begin next month. A quick summary of the enhancements that city staff implemented since over the last year. Uh, we want to highlight the speed limit pavement markings that were done, as you can see in the picture there. And this was done at eight locations along Vineyards Parkway to help advise and, um, and, and enhance the visibility of our speed limit of Vineyards Parkway at speed limit of 35 miles per hour. We've also worked with Terra Care, the city's contractor, to make sure landscaping is kept, kept, uh, below a certain threshold. I think it was 20 inches, if I recall correctly. Um, and here's a picture of them working on that. Uh, the other enhancement that we did was to improve the crosswalk striping, uh, at the two intersections. Here you can see, uh, the before and after. Uh, the after shows a wider crosswalk and as well as the, the ladder pattern to make it, to enhance the visibility. City also was successful in receiving an award of $100,000 in grant funding from the, from Metropolitan Transportation Commission through its Transportation Development Act, our TDA fund. Uh, the equipment procurement is on hold pending the all-way stop sign warrant. Uh, here's a quick highlight of the, of what the grant funded enhancements would provide, which is essentially, um, adding, uh, advanced warning, uh, of the crosswalks as, as folks would push the button at the intersections to cross. Uh, these advanced signs would coordinate and light up as well. And here is the other intersection. As a quick recap since last year, uh, staff has met with the HOA representative to discuss the warrant analysis and data. The HOA representative is in agreement that the warrant is not met, primarily due to low side street volumes and accident history. Uh, there were no changes to accident history at these two locations, uh, over the last year. And staff has completed selection on all call consultants, executed contracts and have scheduled a consultant to perform an always stop warrant analysis in April. Please note that if the stop signs are, are going to be installed and warranted, then the, uh, existing RFPs or rectangular rapid flashing beacons would have to be removed. Uh, prior to wrapping up my presentation, just want to quickly cover reasons why we follow the stop warrant analysis. Primarily because if an always stop or stop signs are in a stop without, when they're not warranted, uh, they would cause safety issues. Uh, I'm going to go through a list of some of these that may, may occur. We, they include first, an increased chance for rear end collisions, uh, disrespect for traffic control devices, meaning, uh, as, as, uh, V, as drivers go through the intersection and they see the stop sign, but there's not enough side traffic to kind of warrant a full stop, they would eventually grow weary and fatigue of the sign and tend to do a California stop, a rolling stop. Uh, this would lead to pedestrian and cyclist safety issues, uh, where people are crossing the street expecting the vehicles to stop and they may not stop. And then also, uh, the additional stop signs, if not warranted, would be an inappropriate substitute for traffic calming. Also, this causes a local issue. Um, we try to be consistent citywide with our applications for stop sign installations. And if we were to move forward, uh, without proper warrants, uh, it could be led to an inconsistent application citywide. And, uh, that concludes my presentation.
Log on to log off. There's a feedback on Zoom that's coming. So, and I know that the council member wants to participate. So Councilmember Pearson, would you mind trying to log off then back on to see if it might be coming from your side?
It, it is not. And the feedback actually stopped. It was only when Alan spoke. I don't hear what you all, but if you want me to-
No, no, no. No, great. If it, if it's corrected itself, that's great.
Alan, do you mind testing your microphone just for a moment?
Test, test.
I think it's been resolved. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Okay, um, we will move into clarifying questions. Council has any? Vice Mayor, did you have a question?
I have one question. I saw on the staff report, it said for stop signs, it would be, um, $700. Uh, was that for all stop signs? If we put one at Solera and Trilogy and Andalucia and Sacred Mountain? Or was that per stop sign?
I may have to defer to Polyworks Director Casey Wickard on that. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I'm not sure is the true answer here. Um, it's probably per stop sign, but I'd have to go back and verify that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, we will now open up public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please fill a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed by those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item or after the timer has expired. We received five written public comments in advance of this item, which are displayed on the screen. First speaker I have is Patricia, followed by Joe, followed by Mr. Smith.
Counsel, Madam Mayor, I'm Patricia Boom and I'm a resident of Trilogy. Um, and I use Solera Street to cross a vintage park, Vineyards Parkway. Um, the traffic, you've done a number of studies on this. One of the things that I found, uh, in the position I was in, in your position, I sat on a council and we had to make decisions using, um, all of the staff report. One of the things that isn't included, the staff report, is the sunset. The sun setting hits right down that street. And that needs to be taken into consideration. It is a period of time where people do cross there. It's time when people come home from work and go up to the club to get their mail and so on. Um, the other thing is, um, there's one stoplight at Meowak. The only other stop, slow down on that road is at, uh, John Muir Parkway. So there's nothing slowing that traffic down regardless of what the speed is. I've noticed that they use those visual speedometers to just see how fast they can go. I have seen them up to 47 miles an hour. I don't want to know how high it will go. Um, and that's not good. Um, most of them stay at speed limit, but I have seen them, they come around the curve. You cannot see the line of sight easily when you're leaving to go across the road. And that line of sight, as you start to cross, those cars are coming down faster because they're coming down a hill. And sometimes you have to look at all the studies that you've done, take it all into consideration. And then you listen to the people that are here tonight to tell you because they are experiencing this intersection. And sometimes you just have to do the right thing. And I think this is the right thing to put the, uh, stop signs in. So please, we ask you to put the stop sign in and do the right thing. Thank you.
That work? Good. Anyway, uh, Mayor, council members and staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this critical matter. Uh, I'm Joe Young, Director for the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Owners Association, also known as Trilogy, which represents about 1,800 Brentwood residents. We are deeply concerned about the recent tragedy at our community entrance and the ongoing traffic situation at the Vineyards and Trilogy Parkway's intersection. And we do appreciate the things that the city has already done. The situation continues to be critical. I have asked some of our residents to come today. If you would raise your hand rather than- If you would raise your hand rather than having them all speak or bringing all 1,800 here. You have my planned remarks. I'm going to deviate from them a little bit based on the presentation. There is a heavy dependence on what's called a warrant analysis. That's probably a misnomer. It should really be called a statistical analysis. And I will caution that manual uniform traffic control specifically cautions warrants are not a substitute for engineering judgment. The fact that a warrant for a particular traffic control device is met is not conclusive justification to install or not install a device. And that is from the manual that's used. I will comment further that, yes, several warrant analyses have been done that didn't meet the criteria, but the manuals also say that you are to consider other things. And I've already provided you with a 29-page report outlining all of those things. But in particular, on that report is the other things, site distance, things of that nature, that are not met at this intersection. And also the fact that when considering our area as a small, limited community, which has the hazard but has a different risk profile, there are Department of Transportation documentation that indicates lower threshold numbers should be considered. So we're asking you tonight to consider those numbers, to look closely at the material we've provided, and feel that moving forward with stop control at this intersection, four-way stop, is critical to the safety of the Brentwood residents, and ask you to consider that as we move forward. I'd also like to say that the situation there continues to grow as there are more and more traffic. But thank you again for the opportunity to speak, and do please review all the material we've submitted.
My name is Lois Smith. I live at Trilogy. My sister-in-law isn't here this evening. She's been a vital part of our community in addressing concerns, and I really appreciate her. I live in the Tuscany Community Trilogy with my spouse, Jerry. We live just a few blocks from the intersection of Solera and Vineyards Parkway. Jerry has cerebral palsy and uses a mobility scooter to get to the swimming pool and the clubhouse and activities there. Since the accident on October 27, 23, she's been scared to cross the Parkway because drivers ignore the blinking lights at times. Also, my sister-in-law lives nearby and often comes to her house on her tricycle, having to navigate across Vineyards Parkway at Solera. The turns in the road make it hard to see cars speeding by when you start crossing. I know there are other people in my neighborhood who have trouble crossing this intersection because of this factor. So I think it's important to put a stop sign with a blinking light on Vineyards Parkway to make it safer for everyone to use. Thank you.
The next public speakers are Harold, followed by Dave.
Thank you. My name's Harold Jaffe, and my wife and I moved to Trilogy in August of 2022. I don't want to belabor the record by repeating what prior people have said, but I would emphasize the glare issue that I believe Ms. Boone pointed out. I've walked up that hill going west at least 100 times at a pedestrian speed with one of my dogs. And I can barely see the cars coming down Trilogy going from the east. And therefore, what is somebody going to see when they're driving a car at 35 or 40 miles an hour? And as Mr. Young said, people go into the Trilogy Parkway every day to get their mail. Not covered, and the issue of the warrants put up by the Director of Engineering, many times I walk down Concord to Marsh Creek, and there is a stop sign there. And that crosswalk is not nearly as busy as the Trilogy Parkway crosswalk is. So if the stop sign is warranted at that location, it's warranted even more at Trilogy and Vineyard. Thank you.
I too am a member of Trilogy. I live in Tuscany, off of Andalucia. So like many of the members here who came tonight to represent our community, we're frequently challenged by trying to cross that busy street without the support of any stop sign at that location. I've spoken before to the city council on a number of occasions. The first time was about three weeks after the terrible incident that occurred in our community, where one of our residents lost their lives. And I noticed that Alan's data says they haven't had an accident since then. That's a good thing. But I think we don't want to go another day without taking an opportunity to do something as simple as putting in a couple of stop signs that the community clearly supports. And as Joe mentioned, much of the data supports. We don't want to risk another life in our community. We've had the opportunity to speak with several of the council members individually, as well as the mayor, and I think everybody agrees that this is a necessity, that the engineering study, the warrant system, does not give consideration to some of the factors that we encounter trying to cross that street. The environmental conditions, the glare, the speed of traffic, especially for cars coming up from the college. There's just a lot of factors, and I think that's where, as Joe mentioned, just good, serious judgment needs to be considered. We studied this. You've committed a lot of resources over the last two and a half years to really focusing on this. I think it's time to stop studying it and just take leadership responsibility and go ahead and approve it. Let's not wait till we have another consultant on board until another accident occurs. Let's just get this done for the safety of the individuals that are living up there. I appreciate all your energy and your time, and I hope that perhaps this will be the last time that we have to talk before the city about this. But we will continue to come until a stop sign is installed. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards in person, and I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. So let's move into council discussion.
So I'm going to just say off the bat, I'm in support of a stop sign. And I understand we have engineers that have far better skill set at doing these kinds of studies. But one of the things that was interesting is when I did meet with your HOA, and you had your analysis with all of your data on it. And I went home and I was like, I'm sitting here making a judgment on a data set that looks very similar to when I sell wine during the day. And how can I possibly put the same value of analytics on people's lives that I've put on selling cases? And I was disappointed with myself. We've spent so much money on this intersection, we could have paid for like stop signs all up and down that street. I am done spending money on studies. I don't want to do it. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. But when our, when 1,800, and it's not all of them, so a percentage of the 1,800 people come and say, this is what we want, then at some point, we just got to say this is what they want. And I understand why you want it. I come out that intersection. I have friends that live in Trilogy, and it is difficult to see. I have friends that live up there who have mobility issues. So it's hard for them to cross the street at the same speed that someone else would. So I think that, yes, the data tells us some things, but it doesn't tell me that, you know, Betty Sue walks at half my speed because, you know, she might have a knee issue or whatever the case may be. So I am full support of a stop sign. I think that there's been so many close calls up there, and I think that the demographics is just a little different, and we can't, it's not all in the data. It just, it can't be, these are people. And so I know that you gave us the price for a stop sign, but I also want to know what the price of a flashing sign, because when I'm coming down that turn, it's sometimes hard to see the stop signs coming up. So we need to kind of tell people that it's coming up. So how much would that be? And then the stop signs at the intersection?
Those flashing beacons are between 15,000 and 20,000 per installation.
Okay, thank you. And those are my comments. I'm in support of getting something done. We would have already paid for this.
In the staff report, it talks about a study which would be finished by April 22. Is that study already done, and we're just waiting on the results? Or if we cancel it, would we get, would we not have to spend the money on whatever that study costs?
The timing works out perfectly where we have the consultant, we have the proposal from the consultant to do the work. So the good news is we haven't started that work yet. The reason why we put it on pause is because we're currently on spring break, so we didn't want to give the direction for the consultant to start this week or last week. So it kind of worked out. We're gearing up for them to start next week. But if we still have the option, we gave them a heads up that we may not move forward depending on how it went tonight. So to answer your question, yes, there was no money spent at this point. We just have a proposal. Are we ready to go?
Okay. Now, there's a couple more questions. If, what would the drawback be? I'm sorry. Do you currently recommend a stop sign at that location with the study that we've already done?
From my seat, as a city engineer, I understand the desire to use judgment outside of analyses and numbers. According to the data I currently have, I don't have that, or I am not in favor, or I'm not finding that warrant being met. So currently, no, I am not comfortable with it. However, as Mr. Young noted, there's always growth in the city that might, you know, we do have the consultant ready to go next month, and things may change. We may have site analysis changed, or if particularly volumes increased, then we may be a little bit closer to meeting those thresholds, where I might be more comfortable, or if the warrants, or if it's really close to a warrant being tripped, is kind of what I'm looking for.
Okay. So our traffic engineer, or I'm sorry, the city engineer doesn't recommend, what would be the drawback to us putting a stop sign at a location that's not warranted by or recommended by our city engineer? Is there a drawback to that?
I think anytime the city council approves plans for improvement projects, you want to be mindful of the reasonableness of your decision and the evidence that you're basing your decisions on, so that if you're ever challenged, you have good, solid evidence to point to in support of whatever decision you make.
So we did discuss a term earlier that the mayor asked about a California stop. Is that the one we? Another term used by law enforcement is a duck pond, which you put a stop sign, or a stop sign exists in a location where it's not necessarily used very frequently because there's not enough cross-traffic. And officers can sit at that intersection and continuously write citations for the people that won't stop at the stop sign that's there because they're so infrequently cross-traffic that they get used to the fact that they don't have to stop there. And that would make the intersection more dangerous for pedestrians trying to cross who assume there's a stop sign, so everybody's going to stop for them, but they're not going to, or they may not. I'm not necessarily, I've obviously not made up my mind whether I would like the stop signs there or don't want them there. I do want to be really clear that the safety of the public is my concern, not what the citizens want. It's not what you necessarily want. It's, is that the safest way to make Vineyards Parkway safer? If we gave everybody everything they wanted, it doesn't necessarily solve our problems. It could create additional problems that we haven't started looking at yet by putting a stop sign there. And I don't want to jump ahead and then us cause the accident because we put a stop sign where one isn't warranted, and people begin to not heed to that stop sign because there is so infrequent of cross-traffic. Just, we have to consider everything, not just what the desires of the neighborhood are, it's the better part of the city.
Councilmember Maloney?
For the update that we're receiving on April 22nd, can you explain exactly what it is that we'll be receiving?
Just to clarify, we'll get the consultant started as early as April 1st. However, I don't want to commit to the timing study where I'm aiming for the 22nd, but it may be possible we won't be able to return to council until May 8th with that final decision or final summary. What the warrant analysis will do is it's going to be a full warrant analysis. It'll do, it'll take traffic counts. So the consultant will lay out the detector loops and hoses to collect counts, and it's going to be for a full week because the last time we presented data, it was focused on Wednesdays. However, taking that into consideration, we're going to do a full week coverage to find the largest eight-hour volume that we can use to justify these stop signs. This is also going to include a site distance analysis to make sure that there's adequate site distance clearance for not only pedestrians but also for vehicles as they approach the intersection, where I have to mention bicyclists as well. And then, let's see, site distance, volume. There's a third piece I'm missing right now. Speed is, we've already determined that the 85th percentile speed is over 40, so we know we have a good idea of a speed. But yes, the analysis will also include the rates of speed of the vehicles going through the intersection. And the third aspect is accident history, which is not something the consultant will provide, something we'll provide.
Thank you. And then, in the event that this study does not recommend a stop sign, has the city done everything in our power that we can for the intersection, or would there be more suggestions that will be brought forth?
First of all, if the stop sign warrant came in positive, I would order into have the stop signs installed immediately. I was working with Polyworks, of course. However, if it was not warranted, as I mentioned earlier, there is a, we receive a grant to purchase additional flashing signs to provide advanced warning of people crossing Vineyards Parkway.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
So I want to first go back and say thank you to all the residents who've come back to voice your comments, your concerns. We take your concerns very seriously, especially in light of that you've lost someone in your neighborhood due to behavior that brings us here today. And I want to thank staff, I want to thank you, Alan, in particular, for all of the enhancements that we gave you for recommendations and for obtaining the grant funding. And I don't think this is any attack on staff. This is just the issue of how do we figure out how to make this work for everyone? One thing I want to say is, yes, data drives pretty much everything we do, but they're as stable as we want it to be. For example, to me, the warrants, as they've been explained to me, are snapshots in time. And I think we were doing the warrants on like a Wednesday or a certain time of the day, and it takes a snapshot in time. I drive up that area to go to Rotary meetings, to get my massages. I mean, I probably try to spend more time up there because it's where I hope to, in a few more years, I've got a couple of years before I hit the magical age of when I can actually move to that area where I'd love to live in that community. But driving there- But driving there, I do see this speeding, I do see the disrespect for all of the enhancements that we've done. And I can say that it would be disturbing even if I was a person in a senior community grade to just go do something that I have the privilege of doing, like getting my mail every day. And so that being said, I, there's been, you know, I understand what Councilmember Orlamens is talking about. And, you know, we don't want to do anything that's going to cause anything. But without having the actual traffic stops, stop signs there, we don't even have the mechanism for enforcement beyond speed. What everybody's been talking about, this California stop is really called a rolling stop. It is governed under California Vehicle Code Section 22450. It says everyone needs to, anyone at a stop sign is required if they see one to stop at a stop sign. But the other part of that code said it allows for local authorities to adopt rules and ordinances and to bring forth when the local governing body wants to put a stop sign. And so I'm of the opinion that either way it goes, whether we wait for the warrants to come back, and we've already seen them not work, just like we've seen VMT not work in this chamber, right? That's data, but it hasn't worked for us when developments come, that we put the stop signs there. And people are not respectful of the blinking lights. People are not respectful of the, and cutting down shrubs doesn't deal with the fact of we do have the sun setting. It's not gonna, it's not stopping. I think as we begin to see the stop signs go, we'll see behavior of learned behavior of the people who consistently travel it, the nose, the, I'll give you one example. Here, every morning when I drop my kids heading towards Sand Creek, as if you're coming from Oakley, there is a complete blind spot there. People travel down here at high speeds. But there are these stop signs, consistent stop signs, stop signs that people by nature know who travel that way to stop at. And I'm hoping that that is what happens on Trilogy. So I'm leaning towards putting the stop signs there. We've had this conversation before. The speeding is still occurring, even with the mitigating factors that have occurred. And so I think we have articulated enough and have heard from residents who are still seeing the high speeds enough to justify us putting a stop sign. I think we operate sometimes too much in the fear of the unknown, but I think the only way we'll know is by trying. So we have the $100,000 for the flashing stop signs. I think we add those as well as put a stop sign at Solera Street in Trilogy and do the other stop sign. I'm over it. I'm ready to go ahead and just give it a try. So that's where I'm headed at and where I would honor and vote on a motion.
Can I ask you a question? How much is the sound study? I mean, the, sorry, sound study, the traffic study?
Last I recall, it was just under $13,000.
How much?
$13,000.
Okay. And, okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in and say a few things first before we move forward. But I actually was planning on also thanking staff because we have been trying, as we've moved along, to use whatever mitigating functions we could possibly take to try and help the situation. And staff jumped on them incredibly quickly. When we decided on what we wanted some of those mitigations to be, staff jumped on it. So the lights and the extra striping and all the rest of it and the landscaping, I just, I just have to say thank you. I think that those things were very well done and they were very, very quickly done. And I would, I would agree that I think they're not quite enough. I don't, I just want to say, I don't blame staff for not being enough. What I'm saying is I think we're just recognizing we've taken those steps and we need to move a little bit further. For me, we launched our Aging and Disabilities Friendly Community Committee, in part because we wanted to start really seriously taking the aging and disabilities communities into consideration in our planning and in our policy and in our representation all across the board. And I could not be a part of that committee and be one of the members who launched that committee without seriously taking that into consideration here because we do have, and I, no offense to anyone, an aging community is much more likely to have disabilities, even if they are just simply related to aging. So the fact is, there is going to be not as, the pace is not going to be as quick. The ease of movement is not going to be as quick. And I've been in the aging industry for a while, so I'm not just speaking out of, you know, the top of my head. But I actually am old enough to move to Trilogy and believe me, I've been tempted. And I keep saying, every time we have Trilogy residents, I keep saying, invite me to things. I love being there. But I do think regardless of any other criteria, that is a significant one that needs to be taken into consideration. And I have driven on Vineyards Parkway specifically at the time of day and the time of year to catch that flash, that light. And there was a name for it that somebody mentioned, and I can't remember what it is. But it is absolutely blinding. And I think some of these criteria that are outside of what a typical warrant would warrant have to be considered. They have to be part of our decision. And so I'm agreeing with the fact that, yes, data is saying one thing, but I'm also saying that if we can save, like Councilmember Mendoza said, I was going to ask that same question. If we can save some of the money from that study and put it towards another mitigation, that would help. I feel that the stop signs are necessary with the lights on them that could be potentially motion activated, if that's a thing. And then some sort of a warning prior to. Actually, coming out of the Trilogy clubhouse, I stopped my car in front of the crosswalk and looked both ways and absolutely could not see around that curve. And I know that that happens. I know that it's something that does happen at other crosswalks. But I also know that if I had to inch forward into the crosswalk in order to see around the corner, I'm impeding the walking space of someone with disabilities. So for me, that's a very different, different criteria than some other area that might be looking for a stop sign. So I don't know, let me see, I'm going to look at my notes really quickly and see if there's anything. I did read a lot of the information on the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. I'm not an expert. I know that. I'm proud that I could even say that. So all of your input is critically important. I just, I just want, I want us to consider a lot of it. I want us to consider the data, but also the community and the community specifically. This is, this is a isolated community criteria for a population under 10,000, for example, that I got from that study. So I think there's just other things we need to really look at here. I don't think that in every single situation, a stop sign is the solution. I do think in this case it is. So at this point, do we have a motion? Councilmember Mendoza, you mentioned that?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion that we spend staff time and money to have stop signs installed at this intersection, along with a warning that the stop sign is coming. And I think you need it from like where LMC is down. I don't think necessarily need it up, but where, you know, how you bend and you can't see. So I think one warning sign is necessary. And as soon as we can get that done, that would be fantastic.
Can I make a friendly amendment, please?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I would amend this to say that we put a stop sign at Solera Street and Trilogy Parkway and at Andalucia and Sacred Mountain with the comments made by Councilmember Mendoza with the, with the warning signs. I'd also like to amend that we use the grant funds to install the flashing crosswalk signs.
Yes, accepted.
And that was the warning? Was that the warning?
Yeah, the one that says it's coming.
And then the stop sign itself, was it going to have like motion activated lights on it?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's something we should consider, the price differential. If it's not that much, then we should just go ahead and do it.
That one I would defer to staff about.
I'm willing to, yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you. So with regards to the flashing stop sign requests, those are 24/7 flashing. There is no motion activation. There is no button. I just want to point out with the flashing stop signs, I'm just aware of the one in downtown between City Park and the library. Typically, the direction is for stopping flashlights to be installed in high pedestrian areas. Like I mentioned here, I know there are pedestrians, there are concerns about visibility, but because just my, my professional advice is not to move forward with the flashing stop signs just yet. We could go with normal stop signs. We could always come back again. Hate to say that again, but I just want to put that out there that it's typically flashing stop signs are used in high pedestrian volume areas.
My friendly amendment would not include the flashing light.
And I'm removing that, actually. Thank you, Alan.
Okay, that's, and then we can assess what happens after that and then move forward if something else comes up and we need something else later on.
And I will second. Can we get a roll call vote, please? Or we have clarification first?
I had a second, I already had a second.
Oh, I thought you just had amendment, sorry.
So there's been a lot of discussion as a motion was started a few minutes ago. And so it's hard to try to collect all that. So I don't know if someone would like to restate it or we can do our best to?
Yeah, we would like stop signs currently with no flashing signs, just the stop signs at the corner of Vineyard Parkway and Trilogy.
No, can I, can I say it? Solera Street and Trilogy Parkway.
Aren't we looking at Trilogy Parkway?
Yes.
Trilogy and Vineyard, correct? Oh, it changes, that's why I was confused. It changes at that intersection.
So it's Solera Street and Trilogy Parkway in Andalucia and Sacred Mountain, where the stop signs would be, plus the warning signs that there are stop signs. And all, so to use grant funds for the flashing crosswalk signs, not the flashing stop sign.
Correct. Does that make sense?
And to not move forward with the traffic study in case there are any questions around that.
All right, one point of clarification for Vice Mayor Pearson. I'm having trouble following the flashing crosswalk signs.
Aren't those the ones that, at the stop, when you stop just across the street that says that there are flashing, not the lit up stop line, but the ones that someone pushes?
Thank you for that clarification. So per municipal, I mean, per the manual of traffic control devices, and we can't have, we can't have both unfortunately. I pointed out earlier that if we went forward with stop signs, the RRFBs would have to go away. They would be in conflict in a way because vehicles will have to stop no matter what. Kind of, and the flashing for crosswalks are kind of more of a permissive thing, whereas if people are using a crosswalk, it'll flash. So in this regard, vehicles, if the stop signs are there, they would be enforced first, and that should be the only one. So.
So then just the stop signs?
Yeah.
And the warn, and the pre-warning for the stop sign that's coming up?
One more clarification. Hold on a second, Katie has a clarification.
Just, so we're all on the same page. Are you asking for stop signs to be installed at all four corners of each of these intersections or just on Vineyard Parkway? I don't know if Alan has thoughts on this, but I want to make sure we're understanding how many signs you're requesting here.
I counted seven. Was it seven?
It's actually, at each intersection, there currently, the side traffic's already stopped. So the stop signs we're talking about is only on Vineyards Parkway.
Yeah.
So just for a total, it's four, right?
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to repeat that again as my friendly amendment is second?
Hold on just a second, they're.
Yeah. Can you put up the map, Alan, just so people know exactly what we're talking about? I think that that's the confusing part right now. Please, sorry. So did you have another question, Darren?
There was discussion related to directing staff not to perform a traffic study. There might be some reasons why staff might want to perform a traffic study in the future. So I would, I would request that you not include that. Staff is obviously not going to expend money that we don't need to. But for some of the, some of the reasons that your city attorney mentioned, there might be, there might be a reason for the city wanting to perform a traffic study sometime in the future. And so I'd ask that that not be included in the motion.
Okay, then I retract that part of the motion.
Okay, do you need Councilmember Mendoza to repeat? Okay, and then Vice Mayor, you're still good with the second?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
I'm here by myself and I vote yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlamens?
No.
Mayor Meyer?
Aye. The motion passes.
Thank you all for coming out.
I'll allow the applause this time. Okay, we are going to move backwards into, where are we? F1, the Mobile Vending Permit Application Fee and Permit Fee for BMC, Chapter 5.68. This is the Amendment to the Cost Allocation Plan and Schedule of City Fees Related to Mobile Vending Permits and Applications. And Carrie, Brean Director of Finance, will present.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I have a very brief presentation for you this evening. So earlier this year, on January 14th, the City Council amended the municipal code to update the chapter on mobile vending. Tonight, staff is recommending the adoption of two new mobile vending fees, which are necessary to implement the code changes approved at that time. The recommended fee amounts for the mobile vending permits match those adopted by the City Council last June for the sidewalk vending application and permit. As displayed on this slide, the proposed fees are a $25 non-refundable fee for the application and $135 for the permit fee. The $25 application fee is based on a 15-minute review of the application by staff to ensure completeness. As with the already approved sidewalk vending fee, staff does not recommend tying the application fee to any CPI increases. After initial acceptance, the application will then undergo a thorough review and insurance verification estimated to take approximately one and a half hours. Upon approval of the application, the city would then collect the permit fee of $135 and issue the mobile vending permit. This fee is proposed to be annually adjusted by the CPI. The adoption of the proposed mobile vending application fee and permit fee would cover reasonable costs associated with services provided by the city. This concludes my presentation, and staff is available for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Carrie. Do we have any clarifying questions? Seeing done, we can move into the public hearing and public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed by those participating via Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards in person. And I have no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. And council discussion. Vice Mayor, did you have any discussion?
Madam Mayor, if you could just close the public.
Thank you.
If you could close the public hearing, just so that portion's done.
Closing the public hearing. Thank you. And it looks like there was no council discussion. So at this point, we can take a motion.
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution amending the cost allocation plan and schedule city fees.
I second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
Although my young son came in to give me a good night kiss, I am now alone. And I vote aye.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlamens?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. And the motion passes. We are moving into requests for future agenda items, new requests.
Madam Mayor, we have G3.
Oh, I just skipped right over G3. My apologies. So this is the, to approve and authorize a city manager or to execute a successor memorandum of an understanding between City of Brentwood and the Brentwood Supervisors and Professional Employees Association for the period of July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. Sakari Bashir, Director of Human Resources, will present this next item. Thank you, Sakari.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The item before you tonight is a successor contract between the City of Brentwood and the Brentwood Supervisors and Professional Employees. The period of that contract is July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027. I would like to share that the city negotiators began to meet with the bargaining groups in February 13 of 2024. We had several meetings, passed a last, best and final offer on November 6, 2024. We continue to have discussions about the last best and final offer until the bargaining group ratified the last best and final offer on March 3rd. So I am available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Sakari. Any clarifying questions from council? Okay. Okay, we can now open up public comments.
If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed by those participating via Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards in person or hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. Closing public comments. Any council discussion? If none, then do we have a motion?
I can make it.
Okay.
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute a successor MOU between the city and the Brentwood Supervisors and Professional Employees Association for July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
I will go ahead and second, and can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
I'm alone, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Aye, and the item passes. Thank you. So the next item would be Request for Future Agenda Items, New Requests. If you have a request, please go ahead and speak up. Okay? I have one that's actually, oh, sorry, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Oh, I can go after you, Madam Mayor. Go for it. You got this.
Why, thank you. This is more of a requesting an update, so it may not be an actual agenda item, but I wanted to make note of a request I have for an update. I mentioned that I had met with the Brentwood Tobacco Group, which included a resident and a couple of county members, and from what I understand, the TRL has not come back for its next reading, and so I'm kind of looking for an update on when that would happen. Also, the urgency ordinance about new smoke shops, I believe, expired in September, if I'm understanding that correctly?
Yeah, I think Eric could give a real quick update.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Regarding the TRL ordinance, we are planning to bring that back to the council at the April 22 meeting. So we're actively working on the staff report and materials for it. I'm not sure at this point as to your second question, but I can do some research and get back to the council on that shortly.
Perfect, Eric. I'm going to withdraw my new request. I have a bunch of questions associated with it, and I will save them for April 22. Thank you very much for that. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I have a future agenda item request. It is that we had brought this up, and I thought we had made it a proclamation, but it doesn't look like it made the proclamation list. I would like to have a future agenda item request that April be in honor of American Muslim Appreciation and Awareness Month.
Vice Mayor, can I make a friendly amendment?
Go ahead.
Could we just have an agenda item to add more proclamations? Because I've had a few myself, and I believe it was supposed to be brought back to us at some point.
I'm happy to do that as long as this one is included in there.
Absolutely. Thank you.
There are some clarifications from staff?
So instead of a future agenda item, if council members have items that they would like to see included on future resolutions, maybe if you just send an email to the city clerk, she can then put those together, and then we'd bring them to a city council meeting for consideration. If it's a future agenda item, we have to bring it back at the next meeting. You'll then discuss it, and then you would say. So I think the easiest way, send an email to the city clerk, and then those will be brought back for the city council for consideration, similar to what's done kind of on an annual basis.
The two of you, maybe one of you writes and copies the other so that it can be part of the same request?
Just separate, each council member if there's any other ones. And Katie, are you okay with that? I didn't ask Katie. We'll go ahead and do it that way without asking Katie.
But we are asking Amanda because her light's on too.
We need to ask the maker of the question too, if that's okay with her, before we say we're going to do that, because I have some feedback on that as well.
I can make everybody happy really quick. We do actually have a future agenda item request that was submitted by email from two council members, and so this will be brought on a future agenda to discuss and to update the proclamation list. So everyone's requests for proclamations can be included at that time.
additions can be made live?
Yes, you can email me your requests, and I can include them so that they're included on the agenda for discussion, but you may also add at the time of the meeting additional requests.
So if I can, because I think this was my future agenda item request, when will that meeting happen? Because if I'm asking for it for this April, for it to be a resolution, then my recommendation would be that I keep my future agenda item request, unless you think it's going to happen after April.
Right, it is scheduled to come back at the next meeting. So if it's something for the month of April to recognize, then it can be discussed and adopted, the new proclamation list at the April 8, and then we can bring the new proclamation for the second meeting of April for recognition.
Okay, thank you. Then I withdraw my request.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Moving on to requested agenda items, and we have a request from Councilmember Mendoza concerning an update to the Public Art Program guidelines.
Yeah, and I don't think this is a rush because I don't think that we have a lot of development coming in right now, but when development comes through, they pay their art development fees. And right now, you know, in this case, we wanted to use it for that amphitheater area up by Trilogy, but we can't because it has to be for art. So I would like to look at that code and see if we can update it so that we can use those funds on things that support art. I think one of the things we have to discuss is, do we want it for ongoing maintenance or not, things like that. I'm not sure if I want for ongoing maintenance because that's a variable cost. I'd like it to be fixed cost one time, because I don't know if those funds end, then we still need to figure out operational costs, but I think it's something we need to talk about, just so that our hands aren't tied like they are now with the dollars that we have now.
Any clarifying questions? Okay, we can move into public comments.
If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed by those participating via Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards in person or hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. Moving into council discussion. And I'm happy to speak. I have a, oh, did you want to speak? I can go last. It's fine.
One of the things that I was curious about is currently we have the public arts funds that we can use for new developments when it comes to art pieces and whatnot. What are maybe some examples that you're thinking of?
I was thinking of just like the amphitheater in general, right? We can't use any of those for the construction of the event center or the amphitheater center, which would support arts. I think it's just a little different. People are used to art pieces versus dance or music or theater, and I think that if we're going to support art, let's support it in the way that it needs to be supported and not kind of like lock ourselves into just art pieces.
Thank you. And would this be basically the way I understand it? We can't use anything that we have already. This is anything for the future.
Yeah, that's why I don't think it's a huge rush for staff, because I don't see a lot of development coming forward right now.
Councilmember Orlemans?
It's me. Would it be an overall update of the entire item or just to check whether we can use it for structures, or are we looking to just update the entire?
I just think clarifying that one section. I don't think it's throwing it all away, but it's not just like art that's there. It could be anything that supports the arts, where art can take place, whatever that art looks like, or can be held or supported.
Vice Mayor, did you want to speak? I have some things.
I did. So I think that this is a good, and I actually like to see it come back forward a little sooner, only because it is heartbreaking to hear residents say the needs that we have that are tied to the arts, an artistic expression, and we have funds that sit there, and they're not slated to, as it sits, they're not slated to cover. I think we need to be careful, though, that we are not just adjusting any type of code or any type of, any regulatory mentions or drafting to make it look like it's fitting for one specific project. I think this is over, across the board, is for all future projects that we have, to figure out how we can use this money, because it just sits there, right? And then we see situations in which we're using general fund money to install artwork, or we're using money that we shouldn't have to install because it's not covered by this fund. So it'd be nice to make it work, but I would like to figure out other uses or other ways we can use it, or see if we need to look at it. One of the things that in my area, like what I do for work, is we look at what was the original legislative intent behind why something came into play, and it'd be nice to go back and find out what was the intent initially when we got these funds and what was it for? Because if it was purely for art, art comes in all kinds of forms. I mean, look at it. We argue art in tattoos downtown. So if we want to really look at art, art comes in various shapes, sizes, and we use buildings to bring about musical art or other forms of art that our residents need. So it would be really nice if we got some type of reporting out on what it's, I like this future agenda item request, and I actually asked, requested that we go forward with it, but I actually don't think we delay it because it comes back so much when we talk about the amphitheater, when we talk about other things, even the sports complex. We need to find out how we can use these funds, and we need to find out sooner than later.
So Katie, legally, anything that we've received applications for, if we updated this sooner, could we impact that developer agreement, or no, that it has to be applications received after we make the update?
So I would say that the monies that have already been taken in through the payment of a public art in lieu fee rather than building something have been contributed to the city on the understanding that they will be used in accordance with the guidelines that you already have in place. So those were the rules under which the money was provided, and that would be.
But what about what we have applications for already submitted but hasn't been built, and we have not been paid for? Like if I go to the development page, those items, those developments?
So Eric, maybe you can chime in as to when the public art fee is actually collected from developers?
I believe it's collected prior to building permit issuance, prior to building permit issuance.
So we would have a number of projects that, for example, if you are applying for a vesting tentative subdivision map, then that locks in the items that are in place as of the date that you submit the map, or as of the date that the map is deemed complete. So it might be a different trigger date for different applications depending on the entitlement that you're looking for. So we can look into that for you.
Yeah, if that's the case, because I was thinking anything that we already received, because sometimes you tell me, oh, the application was received on this date, and it has to go by these rules. If that's the case, if it's the tentative map, that's usually towards the end, like that's not at the beginning, right? At the beginning, so I'm going to, I mean, the elephant in the room is like Bridle Gate, for example. We already approved that as a city. So if we change the rules tomorrow, how would that be impacted? Just so that we understand.
So I would say that for a project that you have already approved, that was approved under the rules in place at the time and had vesting rights, like a vesting tentative map would, then those developers are expecting to pay the calculation that was in place at the time.
But not the calculation. The dollars can be used, yes, if we change it, or no, if we don't?
I'm sorry. I would say the rules that were in place at the time that it was approved would be what would govern those applications.
So any application that's sitting on that website right now that says it's under review and has not been approved, if we change the rules tomorrow, would be subject to the new rules?
Not necessarily. If it's a vesting project, like a vesting tentative map, that locks in your relative universe of rules earlier in the process. So I'm happy to lay all of this out.
Yeah, okay.
The other thing to note is that changes to the public art guidelines have to go through the Arts Commission as well.
Or Structure, Marine the Arts, and that we make sure we hold a five-year plan out for PATA, for example, the cost for PATA. And I believe I talked with Carrie about this, and the estimate I think was $50,000 would be inappropriate. Was that right? And I think we also need to make sure that we're understanding the total costs that have been allocated so far that haven't been spent on projects, including installation fees or whatever, whatever needs to come out of it that's already designated but not necessarily spent, that those funds are held to the side before we start looking at what our availability is as far as funding. Katie, you look like you're going to say something.
Just, it seems like the motion so far, anyway, is to only make changes as to what the money can be used for. If you actually look at the public art guidelines as they exist today, it says that students working under the direction of an art instructor are not eligible artists. So do you actually want us to make some broader changes so that PATA would be, you know, there just may be more things to look at once you sort of crack this box open. Another example is the public art guidelines reference an old chapter of the municipal code, and so these guidelines weren't updated when the municipal code was updated, which is something we've talked about in the past. Do you want staff to make that sort of clerical correction when we bring this back? So there might be other changes that the council would be interested in making.
I would say also the Ag Enterprise Fund, the language there has a little bit more leeway in some areas, including things like operations and marketing. So maybe there's a comparison of the two, and maybe there's a way to kind of pull some of that language, which we know is legal, into making this one a little bit more workable for the kinds of things we need to spend money on.
I don't know if in my motion I'm comfortable with the operations part. I think operations should be operational because it's one-time money, and I don't want to count on one-time money for operations that's going to be ongoing. I'm not comfortable with that.
Okay. Fair enough.
Yeah, just because it's like, once it's gone, and like, oh, wait, you can't maintain the park anymore.
I was more specifically thinking about future, like whatever is available from future development could be set aside for something like that, just because I know that some of the hitches into, for example, getting a theater set up is the ongoing operational costs.
So Councilmember Mendoza is correct that even if you revise some of this structure, the underlying concept is either builders install the art on their own project, or we collect a 1% of construction cost in lieu fee from them on a one-time basis. So even going forward into the future, it would be one-time monies.
Yeah, just thinking of different developments, not just one development is all. But I understand, and we are at this point ready for a motion.
So I would like to make a motion that staff spend time and money to review the Public Art Program Guidelines and make adjustments so they can be used for more than just art pieces, but for also other expenses, one-time expenses that would support the arts, whether it be art pieces or dance, music, whatever, any other kind of art that we support as a city. What? Performing theater. Let's call it that. Performing theater.
I second that motion.
And may I ask a clarifying question before the vote? Do you want staff to also bring back clerical corrections such as the inconsistency between?
Yes, please. If we can tick and tie everything, that'd be great.
Okay, and do you want staff to look into the ability to allow such monies to be used by students under instruction of art instructors, which is not currently allowed?
Yes, supporting PATA would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Can we get a roll call vote, please?
We didn't have the second acknowledged.
I second the amendment.
Thank you. Councilmember Maloney?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
I'm alone, and I vote yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Aye. Motion passes, and we are looking for one final motion for the evening.
I make a motion to adjourn. I had to think about what it was.
Oh, we have a second too. Can we get a roll call, please?
Aye, sorry.
Councilmember Maloney?
I'm alone.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
I am alone, and I vote heck yes.
I'm so sorry. Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Yes.
Mayor Meyer?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Thank you.